I'll call the meeting to order, please stand and join us for the budget.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all due justice and law.
May I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the meeting held November 13th? Please.
Hello.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, that motion carries. If you have anyone who wishes to address us, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. And good news report, Dr. Boyce.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce you to a group of Lincoln High students from all grade levels. They're changing the way the Sioux Falls community is connecting with the STEM curriculum. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And it's an area of learning yet these young diligent students are incredibly passionate about. So, tonight we have Lincoln High senior Ashke Akshay, they get it? Akshay Chowdhury and his classmates, again representing all grade levels at Lincoln High School. They created the first ever Sioux Falls STEM Circle, which is an innovative pre-college enrichment program called Once a Month at Augustana University for their fellow middle and high school students and anyone else who's interested in the field of STEM. This program acts as a complement to their education, brings new cutting-edge ideas to the field of STEM that goes beyond the classroom. Akshay and his co-founders, who have helped bring this STEM Circle to life, are here to tell us about their adventure and how they're helping innovate the world. Please welcome Akshay.
Well, thank you everyone for having us tonight. I just wanted to take a little second to introduce everyone who works with me on this because it really is a lot of behind-the-scenes work. So, we have Lila Bachelor, who's a freshman at Lincoln, Ayush Patel, who's also a freshman, Ana Simeonova, who's a sophomore, Ethan Yu, who's a sophomore, Sam Egafretson, who's one of my co-founders, he's a junior, and then Chuck House, who's a sophomore. And then we also have two members who couldn't make it tonight, Isaac Sarbacher, he's another person who co-founded with me, and then Francis Coves-Caromelles, and he's a sophomore. So, yeah, basically what we're trying to do is just get students a really practical side of STEM education that they might not necessarily get in the classroom. And we do that by just having speakers at our monthly events show off really what innovation in our community is about. And the reason why we've expanded it to the STEM context is because we want to try and interest every single student who hears about it. So, if one month our biology talk might not interest someone, well, the next month we might be talking about cybersecurity, which is completely different, yet still falls under that umbrella. And so, yeah, that's basically our message. It's, you know, really simple. It's a unique idea and it's accessible to really everyone who wants to come, even if they're, you know, college students or adults. You guys have any questions for me at all?
What's your next monthly presentation?
Alright, so our next monthly presentation is in February because we took December, January off just because our meetings are held at Augustana and because of that, December, January get a little hectic. So, yeah, our next meeting is February 12th and we're gonna have Dr. Adrian Kramer from DSU talk about sort of the world-renowned computer science program there, you know, security and then hacking and all that kind of stuff. It's really interesting to a lot of our, you know, middle school kids.
I think I heard Dr. Boyce say something about middle school, so what's the age range of students or would I welcome them to this time?
Alright, so we don't necessarily have, you know, a specific age range. Really, it's everyone who hears about it can certainly come. We do tell our speakers beforehand that to make their talks introductory yet in-depth. So, we do get, you know, a lot of the, you know, younger kids who come to our events can still grab onto those, you know, basic details. And yet, you know, when our speakers go in-depth, they really talk about the innovation they're sort of producing in our community. So, it's, you know, the age range, you know, it can be applicable to even, you know, younger middle school students, all the way up to college-level students. So, it's a really, it's a really wide-ranging program.
Very good. Thank you. I got a question.
Yes. What was, what was the impetus for you to start this? What, what's, what drove you to say, "I need to begin this"?
Right, so I mean, all of us here are really like, you know, we really love our STEM classes, we love, you know, math and all the different sciences we get. Yet, at the same time, you know, sometimes we see that those classes aren't necessarily the most like practical, sometimes they get a little technical, and that can really turn students off from STEM. And we thought that if we could make other people love STEM just as much as we could, you know, that would definitely be a good thing for our community. And so, that's something that, you know, we definitely took to heart. And so, we just went to Augustana, Dr. Coman has been, you know, a great liaison at AUGY for us. And, you know, we just decided that if we could get as many people to show up as possible, that would be definitely a good thing, not only for our teachers, but for our community as a whole. And so, that's really what got us started on this path.
So, you have your monthly meeting, and so what for the seven or nine of you, what do you guys do meet outside of that and make plans? What did your structure of your group look like?
Right, yeah, that's exactly what we do. So, we, each of us has sort of a different role in our sort of monthly cycle in terms of how we branch the STEM Circle. But yeah, we just have, you know, members reaching out to people who attended to see what we could improve for next time. We have people who work on our website and our social media, because we have definitely those aspects as well to reach out to our community. And we have people who reach out to our speakers beforehand and just make sure that their talks are sort of how we want them to be geared. So, it's definitely a lot of behind-the-scenes work, as I mentioned, and, you know, that's why we have so many people working with us. Because really, you know, even for something as simple as an hour-long monthly meeting at AUGY, you know, it's, you, if, to make it as professional and yet as accessible as possible, we definitely need lots of different people working with us.
Yeah, and I think that's the beauty of what you're saying, is you're not just providing information to the community about STEM, but the responsibilities and the things that you are each learning as part of this committee and how to work as a team and how to plan events and how to professionally communicate with professionals in our committee, I think are great skills that will serve you lifelong. So, great job, thank you for the information, I haven't heard this before.
Alright. Yeah, thank you. Make sure to tell everyone you know about it. We'd love to get as many people to show to our meetings as possible. But yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. Alright, we'll move along. I've got one little announcement, technology, part of STEM, of course. Typically, our board meetings would be live-streamed. Because of a glitch in our technology, it's being recorded. So, anybody that normally would be watching this at 5:30, will be seeing it sometime later, it's, it's being recorded and will be on YouTube and whatever other ways we have of getting that out. So, technology is great until a glitch comes along. So, alright, any conflicts of interest? None, alright, we'll move on. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Hello.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. And supplemental consent agenda, claims to Stanford Health, A1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries with two extensions, Board Member Parker and Board Member Miltelson. And 9V, add motion to approve claims to Bear McHenry.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and that motion carries with one extension from Board Member Parker. We're on to the reports of Superintendent Dr. Maher.
Okay, thank you, President Alberti. The first report tonight is the 2018 State Accountability Report. Here to give us that report is our Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Academic Achievement, Dr. Boyce.
Thank you, Dr. Maher, board members. Tonight, I bring you the State Accountability Report Card from 2017-18. It's later this year as the state has adopted a new format, some new vendors. And I have to stress that the information is preliminary and we are getting changes, we had changes to the report card today. And so, I will present this information and we will bring more information back to you as that becomes available. But with the Every Student Succeeds Act, they needed to change that report card. Their goal was to change the report card so it was more parent-friendly and provide more clarity for, for the users. And so, that was part of their plan with the new report card. The report card for us, it feeds our strategic plan on the area of student outcomes, and specifically Priority Statement 1, where we provide a rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum instruction for all students emphasizing growth in that achievement gap. And so, that's really what we want to look at with that new report card again. They released the state report card under the ESSA federal guidelines to support the accountability systems, to make it credible, meaningful, and relying on multiple measures. And those multiple measures are the student, the smarter balanced assessment for students' grades three through eight and 11, and then the science for the same grade of, for five, eight, and 11, and then the alternate assessments that go with that smarter balance and the science for students with cognitive disabilities. And then this year, they included the WITA assessment for our English language learners, so our EL students in there. And that's a new piece to that report card. They also wanted to make that report card parent-friendly and engage parents in their child's education while providing transparency on how well schools are educating all students. There's some new measures on there. And so, this is a snapshot of what, if you opened up a school's report card, you would see these tabs across the top. And we have our student performance, and that includes your smarter balance assessment. Student progress, measures the growth of the students, are they growing from year to year? High school completion, that will have your high school graduation rate and the completion, the completion rate. College and career readiness is an expanded area that has multiple measures, and I'll get into that in just a minute because that's a new, they've added some new information in that area. The English language learners, it wasn't a part of the state report card before, but it is now, but that measures all students that take that WITA access test. The educator qualifications, that's a report that Becky Dorman has brought to us before, on how many students have their master, or how many teachers have their masters and how they're highly qualified. School environment, that report was brought to you by Doug Morrison on attendance. And so, that's our attendance and we had that just, the last board report. And school safety's a new area also, and that information comes to us from OCR. So, like previous report cards, the accountability system's built on the 100-point scale, and that's called the School Performance Index, or known as the SPI. Schools will still have an SPI score, and there's two scales, one for elementary and one for middle school and high school. And they'll, students can, or schools can be identified for additional supports based on their performance with the SPI. In accordance with ESSA, the State Department will hold every school accountable across the state for the same rigorous standards for all students. And that SPI rating for each school is based on a point structure, and they'll rank separately on that new SPI. Designations will be made for the first time this next year, whether they're on...
Two different levels.
And we have the comprehensive support and the targeted support. And we do anticipate that more of our schools might fall under that targeted support category. We don't have that information, that'll be finalized in December. That comprehensive support is something you might remember as a focus school or a priority school, the bottom 5% of the title, one buildings across the state. That's how you would qualify for comprehensive support. Targeted support is new, and that's any school that's identified consistently low performing for a subgroup. So, I have my all-students group, and if I have a subgroup that's performing below my all-students group, I could, my school could be identified as a targeted support group. And that's where we might see some of our schools in that area. But like I said, we won't know that, and they're anticipating around December 5th that we'll have that information. So, if I break down the preliminary information, the Sioux Falls School District performed well in the areas of math and science. In the 2017-18 Accountability Report Card, the smarter balance assessment was given to all students' grades three, three, eight, and 11 in the spring. The district math proficiency was equal to the state level at 49%, while we outpaced the state in the area of science by 3%. English language arts proficiency for the district measured at 53, which is an increase from 52% last year, but below the state level at 55%. The district graduation rate, again, we're still working on appeals with the state on that graduation rate because we do believe that there's some accountability still out there, and we're waiting to work through those. But right now, our graduation rate is at 83.42, which is compared, well, to last year at 83.79. So, our graduation rate is steady, stays about the same rate as last year, while our high school completion rate is an increase by 1% at 88%. And that completion rate includes any student up to the age of 21 that receives a diploma or a GED at that time. Our next area is that college and career readiness, and this is an area where they have made some changes and expanded. And so, on the graph on the screen, you'll see the data that I'm gonna show you is based on the 2016 graduating cohort. On the left side of your screen is your assessment readiness. And so, students in that cohort can receive a half a point if they had a three or a four on the smarter balance in the area of reading or math, or if they had an ACT of an 18 on the reading part, or a 20 on the math. Or if the student took the Accuplacer or the NCRC, the National Career and Readiness Certificate. And that's a new test, it's a new test to the Sioux Falls School District, but across the state, 41% of the districts, or students took that last year, but in Sioux Falls, we had five. And so, that's a difference because we have assessment, you know, we, we give the smarter balance and we give, we have a large ACT student, a lot of AP students. So, that's a difference between Sioux Falls School District and the state. And then, when you look on the right side of your screen, and that's your college coursework readiness, if the students take, complete one of those indicators, they get another half a point. And so, the CTE concentrator, so students taking two CTE classes in the same career cluster, and we have a very rich CTE course selection. So, I might choose to take something in culinary arts, but then maybe I choose to take welding. So, those, that's two differences, two different career clusters. So, we have to ask ourselves, is that important, that they take two in the same career cluster? Because we want them to explore and have that opportunity to have that rich environment and see what's out there for them. Dual and concurrent credit, if students take a course in dual and concurrent credit, they, we receive a half a point for that. The AC, that Advanced Placement coursework, that has an asterisk by it because they did not count that in there yet, meaning if I took the course and received a C, we didn't get credit for that in the 2016 cohort, but I did get credit if they took the exam and passed at a, at a three or higher. So, they're working on adding that in, in future years. Because we know we do have students that take an AP course but do not take the exam. And then, the last one is two CTE foundational courses or the capstone, and again, that's has an asterisk, so they're working on getting that information in in future report cards. So, with that information, I'll show you how Sioux Falls perform on the college and career readiness. So, if you look at that first bar graph up there, the district average and the state average for the college coursework readiness, that's on the right side of your screen, that's your CTE concentrator, your dual credit. We scored at, I need to get my sheet. My glasses? 44% on, and the state scored at 64% on that, on that right side. And then, on assessment readiness, we were at, sorry, 42%. And the state scored at 57%. So, overall, that bottom bar graph will show you that the Sioux Falls District scored at 32% for that college and career readiness as compared to the state at the 46%. And the difference being the NCRC, our rich CTE coursework, that they can choose from multiple career clusters. And then, two new categories that we have in there, and the English language learners. And this report was given earlier this fall, that our report shows 29% of our students are on target to exit the EL status, and 50% are growing towards that exiting, but not on target, so continuing to grow. And then, the other new area is that student safety information, which is collected by the Office of Civil Rights, and that information is from the 2015-2016 school year. So, the State Accountability Final Report Card will be issued, the final report will be issued December 17th. But I felt that this, we felt this was important to get you the information when it goes live because we don't have our next board meeting for a couple weeks. So, making sure you had that information opportunity to ask questions prior to it going live, hopefully tomorrow, is what the state is saying that that report card will come out. So, in summary, we performed well on the 17-18 Accountability Report Card. Graduation remains steady at 83% with a completion rate at 88. However, the district math proficiency matched the state at 49% and outpaced the state in the area of science by 3%. ELA experienced slight growth at the district level but behind the state level by 2%. And the new measure of college and career readiness provides insight for the district to examine current student opportunities to ensure students in the Sioux Falls School District are college and career ready. The 2017-18 Accountability Report Card will be linked to the strategic plan as reported to the board in September. And I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions for Dr. Boyce.
Thank you for providing this information. You know, obviously, I reached out to you, especially with the college and career readiness is my concern, because I, I do feel that as our district, we're not, the state is not communicating the same as how we are presenting to our students. You know, we have a plethora of CTE classes and other schools don't. So, how are we going to address that, yet meeting the standards for our children and what the state wants? So, you know, we've talked about having possibly a work session to kind of look into how we can, as a district, make sure we're making those gains in that area, as well as in the reading with scores to make sure, since that's part of our strategic plan too. So, thank you for working with us on that and keep on working on that.
Yeah, we will, we'll keep looking at that.
And that'll be, and that'll be part of our plan. That's really a good segue into that. Both January and the February work sessions will be devoted to reflecting on pieces of this report card. So, this isn't, I hope you got it all tonight, now we're moving on. It's, here it is from a very big-picture standpoint. Now, we'll do a deep dive in February on these.
So, when it's going live tomorrow, will we continue to see changes even after that point?
We will, we will, and, you know, we're hopeful on the graduation rate. And just even looking at how all the other information comes out and that we have a really a true picture of where we're at as a Sioux Falls school district. So, we will see changes, and Dr. Maher will communicate those with you. So, that way, we keep updated and, and then I believe we might have a strategic plan update in January. So, thank you. Thanks.
Great. I have a motion and a second to acknowledge the report.
Second.
Any further discussion? I look forward to the January and February work sessions where we can take a deep dive and, you know, how the results really relate to students in our district and how we truly are performing compared to the rest of the state, so.
It almost feels like having too many options for students is, like, detrimental, thank you. Like, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around, like, my choice would be a negative. And, and I'm sure as we talk about it, we'll come up with how we can really leverage the options that we have and make sure that our students are on the right path. But my gut says we have a lot of great options for students, and I'm with you. Like, if I take a class and I find that that's not my interest, I'm not gonna, I don't want to take another class just to confirm it's not my interest. I want to find out what might be my interest, you know? And so, I think having those conversations and looking at those clusters and what that might look like for students will be very beneficial for, for us as a board, but also thinking about, you know, how we move forward. But yes, it's important to meet a measure, but I think can't, can't go by, we just want to meet a measure, we want to do what's best for students, so.
And that's our report card, and we have to decide what's, what's important.
Yeah, right.
You, you nailed it. We, we want to make sure that we look at the data and we don't, you, we don't just excuse, make excuses for not meeting, you know, high thresholds. We want to make sure that, we also want to make sure that what we're measuring makes sense for the students in our district. And you just stated that.
Very good. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Thank you. And the next report.
The second report tonight is the report entitled, "Results of Requests for Proposals for Construction Manager". Here to deliver that report is our Director of Operational Services, Jeffrey Cagin.
Good evening. It's a great time to be moving forward, to have another COG, hopefully we approve tonight in the construction process and get a, an important part of our design team, our construction team put onboard and move forward with high schools. So, with that, on October 24th, we issued a RFP for the construction manager at risk for the project, for the high school project. We advertised, we web posted, we sent out RFPs to any construction firm that showed interest into the project, and the proposals are due on November 14th. From that, we received four proposals. District Review Committee evaluated the proposals on the following items. We specifically asked each, each in the RFP to address each issue that's on these things. They are project approach, both pre-construction services and construction services. Pre-construction services is working with the design team, evaluating details, evaluating value engineering, so we work with them all the way through the design process. So, we don't do something that might cost us too much and we have to back up. So, it's a very important part of this process in construction management. We've been asked for construction managers' experience, project organization, personnel experience, qualifications, staffing levels. We also asked for project schedule and plans. This is kind of the 2021 versus the 2022 schedules. We got interesting results from that. Then, we asked for fee proposals. Then, this specifically was kind of broken down into three, three facets. Pre-construction services, construction phase, services, that's a CMR fees, that'll be a percentage of the construction cost, and general conditions, staffing levels. These are, general conditions are the staffing they'll have in how, or in the field, superintendents, whatnot, engineering, and what they have on, in the field during the construction process. So, you'll see some of that, that will vary, that's gonna be more fixed than the CMR fees, but that'll vary by person. We ask them then, we ask them to give our, their, their fee levels, and you'll see that exactly listed on the construction cost, when they issue the maximum not to exceed. So, you'll see that all broken down into the proposal during that process. We are in a very good position. All four firms submitted, were very qualified to construct the project and oversee the construction. So, we were in a great spot, we couldn't lose in, in this process. But after thoroughly evaluation of the above criteria, the Journey Group emerged as a leading team for the project. But after thorough evaluation of the above criteria, the Journey Group emerged as a leading team for the project. Journey Group's proposal not only provided the high-level expertise needed for the completed project, they also presented the lowest cost on all three facets. When they added those together, they were by far the lowest proposal of the four. Journey Group will provide the highest level of overall value for the project. The proposals included all the pre-construction and construction services required. And then, I'll go over the three facets of the fees. The fee structures are, were based on lump-sum fee for the pre-construction of $166,790. The CMR service fee is 2.95%. Now, if you equate that to the $68 million estimated cost, and that's plus or minus because that doesn't include the inflation that might be put on there, that's just over $2 million. And then, the general condition staffing levels associated with the project would be 1.5. And that's, like I said, all of those superintendents on sites during the construction process. So if you add those together, it's, their total cost for services is approximately $3.67 million, which is in line with our estimates. So that's, it's even goodness, even betterness. So with that, I acknowledge the report and authorize the president and business manager to enter into a contract with the Journey Group for the construction or the construction manager at risk services for the project. So.
Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great. Questions for Jeff or discussion?
You know, I think all four companies were very, very capable. And it just came down to, I know local is an important factor, but the cost, the value that we gave them, this was, this great. And approved. So I was very pleased with all four. Journey Group was impressive and still one that holds comfortable.
Other discussion? I think, I don't think, I know that, that the process was very thorough. That all four of the companies that submitted proposals were given fair consideration. And in the end, the recommendation from the committee, I believe, is the one that's gonna do the best job for our school district and we give the best return on our investment and is the right decision for us to move forward. Appreciate the hard work of Jeff and the committee that helped to make the decision. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye, that motion carries. Any other business to come for the board? If not, may I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Welcome.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.